Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the Cape Elizabeth Town Council meeting, regular scheduled meeting, for Monday, October 7th, to order. And I'll look to the clerk, who is substituting for Michael this evening, to call the order.
Chairman Walsh?
Here.
Counselor Guvenali?
Here.
Counselor Jordan?
Here.
Counselor Ray?
Here.
Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Wagner?
If you'd all rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all. First item on today's agenda is Town Council Reports and Correspondence. Is there any -- anything to report? I don't see anything. Okay, so we'll move on to Finance Committee Report. Anything to report? Frank? Finance?
Nothing to report. We'll have to talk about the CIP.
Yeah, we have an item later on the agenda. And the financials are attached to your packet as well. That brings us to the first opportunity tonight for citizens to address the council for items that are not onto the agenda. And if you would like to address this, if you'd step forward and introduce yourself to the podium to my left, your right.
I'm Dennis Marot from Westbrook and friend Susan Love from Falmouth. We're both representing the Greater Portland Archangel Sister City Committee. As you -- I see you have a little surprise there tonight at the desk. There's coffee mugs and a latest newsletter. November 18th coming up very quick will be 25 years, marking the initial agreements that were signed in Archangel on November 18, 1988, the Greater Portland Archangel Sister City Project. There were 13 communities, Long Island later added, and 14 communities, including Cape Elizabeth. November 18th, we're going to be having a big celebration and recognition at the Westbrook Middle School cafeteria. That's on the Monday after Veterans Day. It gives some time and information there. We'd like as many people as possible from the Town Council or citizens that have been involved to attend the ceremonies. And some of the -- will be recognized in 25 years of an incredible amount of success. One of the most successful Russian-American Sister City exchanges in the whole country. That's still very active. In the legislative field, medical, photography, string quartet, highway bridges, engineering. There's been tremendous amount of different projects. Also, high school. We ran a high school exchange, student exchange, for 10 years, from '89 to '99. The pituitary on the left was a revival of the high school exchange between Portland High School and School Six in Archangel in 2011. The 12 students from School Six were invited to march in the Portland Veterans Day Parade. They honored the Arctic Convoy veterans, Liberty ships in World War II. That's starting up again, the high school exchange, based on environmental and ecological issues. So, you're welcome to look at the pictures. And if you have any questions, please feel free to contact the two people, Neil Duffett or Dan Glover, on the newsletter. And we look forward to seeing you November 18th. Spasiba bolshoi. Means "thank you very much" in Russian.
Great, thank you.
Anybody who wants additional newsletters, please feel free to pick them up.
So, at the back table, if you would, there's agendas back there. If you just leave them there, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, David.
I'm just wondering if we might ask Deb to inquire about putting some of this information on the town website?
Sure.
Okay, now we move to the Town Manager's Report, which you've all received a copy of that. And I don't know whether Deb would like to make any comments.
I would.
Michael has gone digital, if you noticed, in this report with pictures, which is a little bit different than we've seen in the past. So, he's trying to give us a real-time view of some of the projects that are underway. Deb?
Thank you very much. As Chairman Walsh said, Michael is doing a digital report now, which is incredibly helpful. And also, the same day that we have council meetings, we have department head meetings. So, I'm able to bring a couple more pieces of information to everyone that I think will be of interest. So, I would like to highlight some things for folks. The Thomas Memorial Library Book and Bake Sale will be held on October 18th and 19th. Hopefully, folks will be able to get over to the library to support that event. The Town Center Planning Committee is holding a public forum on Thursday, October 17th, from 7:00 to 9:00, right here in the council chamber. Residents, business owners, et cetera, are invited to come and help the Town Center Planning Committee in their efforts to get more public input on this subject. So, if you'd like to provide input to them, we encourage you to attend the forum. There's also additional information on the town's website, if you'd like to follow along as well. The Conservation Commission will be holding a Trail Work Day on Saturday, October 19th, at 9:00 a.m. The work for that day will be concentrated on the Eastman Meadows Trails. So, if anyone would like to help out the Conservation Commission in that effort, they would really appreciate your help. For more information, our Town Planner, Maureen, can provide more information, if you would like that. Our Ordinance Committee, the Town Council's Ordinance Committee, will be meeting this Thursday, which is October 10th, at 8:00 a.m. in the Jordan Conference Room here at Town Hall. And they'll be looking at possibly amending the business sign ordinance, or the sign ordinance dealing with business signs, allowing sandwich board signs. We know that there's several people interested in that. So, the Ordinance Committee will be doing their work this Thursday, here at Town Hall at 8:00 a.m. And two more things I'd like to mention. On Saturday, October 19th, the Recycling Committee will be sponsoring a paper shredding event at the recycling center. Yes. And that will be held again on Saturday, October 19th, from 9:00 to 1:00. And the paper and so forth will be shredded right there on site. So, folks are aware that they might have some personal information, private information. It won't be taken off the grounds. It will be shredded right there. So, and there is a three-box maximum per car. So, we don't know what the size box is, but I guess if you bring three boxes, they'll take whatever size they are. So.
Three years on the council, that's got to be at least three boxes of paper, right? At least.
At least. And lastly, the fall cleanup at the recycling center. Disposal fees will be waived for residents bringing their materials two weeks in October, from Saturday, October 12th through and including Monday, October 28th. And there will be four Sundays that the recycling center will be open for the recyclables, leaf, yard waste, and wood waste, bulky waste, and brush only. And those dates are on the town's website as well. They'll be open 10:00 to 4:30, October 20th, 27th, November 3rd, and 10th. So, thank you for indulging me a little bit. There's a lot going on, and it was great to highlight that for folks. And again, all this information's on the town's website, capeelizabeth.com, if you would like more information. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. On Thursday night, I believe there's a -- isn't there a thank-you dinner for all of the museum volunteers in Portland? We've all received the invitation, so I'd encourage if you can make it. It's always a great event, and it's always nice to see the people who make it happen out there as volunteers. And then, one other point that I'd like to thank Ted Jordan and his class at the high school for sponsoring and conducting the candidate's night this last week. We had one of our empires here was in that event, and it was just extremely well-done. And they've done it now two or three years in a row, and it gets better every year. And it's pretty exciting to watch that. Of course, I was at home with popcorn and taking care of it, as opposed to here.
I'm going to catch the replay.
There you go. Okay, next item on our agenda is to review the draft minutes of September the 9th. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. The first item on today's agenda is this public hearing on the Ottawa Road Combined Sewer Overflow Permit. We're going to take this a little bit out of order from what you have in front of you, folks. Bob Malley is going to introduce the issue. And we have a presentation that I'd like to have us receive first, as opposed to the way it's now organized. Thank you.
Since February 2010, the Council works with the PSL for water district on the Ottawa Road Combined Sewer Overflow Master Plan. All three entities are stakeholders in the process. It has culminated in the development of the proposed plan to eventually reduce overflows that have occurred at the Ottawa Road Pumping Station over the years. In January of 2012, you received an update on the master plan from Wright Pierce, who were selected by the Water District to develop the plan before you. A component of that process involves hosting a public hearing and receiving public comment, which is the intent of tonight's meeting. The plan, draft plan, has been on file at public works for the past 30 days. We had a legal notice in the paper to let people know that they could view it. And we have not received any public comment to date. The plan was approved by the Maine DEP this past July. And I'd like to introduce Chris Duynell from Wright Pierce, who will provide an overview and answer any questions related to the submission. His associate, Katie Collins, is also here, who worked on the plan. And I want to thank Chris and Katie for all the work they did putting the document together. It's quite voluminous, if you've seen it. But anyway, I'll introduce Chris, and we'll do a short PowerPoint and take her from there.
Thanks for the introduction, Bob. See if I can do this here. Take me a moment. I couldn't get it to show up on my screen here, so I found everything. Thank you very much, Bob. As Bob mentioned, my name's Chris Duynell. I work for Wright Pierce. Katie Collins is joining me here this evening. She works in our Portland office. I guess it was in January of 2012 that we were before the Town Council at a workshop meeting, and I recognized a few familiar faces from that meeting. At that time, we did a longer presentation, about a half an hour presentation. And Mike and Bob had asked me to cut it down to 15 minutes, so I'll try my best to talk about this in 15 minutes, to give you an overview. Bob mentioned Combined Sewer Overflow. An acronym for that is CSO, Combined Sewer Overflow. You have one located here in Cape Elizabeth. It's located at the Ottawa Road Pump Station. And it's jointly owned, as Bob mentioned. There are three stakeholders, the town, city of South Portland, and the Portland Water District. Actually, a small portion of South Portland actually drains into the pump station, drains into Cape Elizabeth to the pump station. And it actually gets pumped and treated at the South Portland Wastewater Treatment Facility. That's the collection system that you have in the northern part of Cape Elizabeth. CSO's been there for a long time. In fact, it's been there as long as the pump station has been there, and probably even before that, before there were treatment facilities and pump stations. But it was just recently licensed with the three parties, sharing this license in 2009. That's actually a photo of the pump station right there. Hard to see this graphic, but basically, that shows you an overview of the collection facilities, where you have joint ownership. You have some collector sewers in South Portland to the north, in kind of the purple color. You have green, I believe the green is infrastructure that's owned by the town, as well as the yellow is, I think, owned by the Portland Water District. And it's hard to see there, and I don't have a -- is there a laser pointer here? I don't have a laser pointer. I apologize. But basically, you have a pump station located very near Danforth Cove, which has a CSO. And I'll describe what a CSO is in the next slide. It's permitted. That's a good thing. It's allowed by Maine DEP and EPA. It's a permitted wet weather discharge, basically a permitted violation of the Clean Water Act to discharge into Danforth Cove. Before, you had wastewater collection facilities, pump stations, treatment plants, basically all the wastewater that came out of homes and all the stormwater that came off streets from rainfall went into water bodies, all in the same pipes. Those were combined. All those things combined into one pipe. A lot of that was taken care of when pump stations were built and treatment plants were built. A lot of that was separated, because pump stations don't do a real good job trying to capture all the rainfall that falls on the earth. It's just too much volume. But not all of that occurred. It was just too expensive to do all that separation. So, during dry weather periods, all the wastewater that drains to this pump station gets pumped eventually to the Family Field or Little John Pump Station, and then it goes to South Portland. But during wet weather, the pump station basically gets overwhelmed. And you have an overflow of sanitary wastewater into a stormwater pipe that eventually drains into Danforth Cove. And that happens, on average, about six times a year during high groundwater conditions and rainfall events. Here's just a photo showing some of the sources of the things that cause CSOs, basically infiltration and inflow. If you look down at the bottom or to the right, you see leaking joints and pipes, root intrusion into pipes, cracked pipes and such. Those are infiltration sources. That basically allows groundwater to get into the pipe, into the pump station. Inflow sources, basically when it rains, rainfall gets directly into the collection system. Roof drains, foundation drains around people's homes that were just conveniently tied into the sewer when they were built. So, those are all sources of infiltration and inflow. So, why are CSOs important? Well, they're important because, as I mentioned, they're a permitted violation of the Clean Water Act. And because of that, they want -- oh, thank you. They want plans, in fact, Maine DEP being a delegated state and in charge of issuing permits here for wastewater facilities. They want to make sure that you create plans, either master plans or long-term control plans, to make sure that you're trying to mitigate that CSO, that it doesn't go on forever. So, you are required, as part of the 2009 discharge permit, to come up with a plan, with a schedule, and costs to mitigate to a certain level these discharges, basically to minimize them. And they're required, by the end of 2011, that a plan be submitted. And that was submitted by Wright Pierce in close consultation with the town, the city of South Portland, and the Portland Water District. The town met that milestone, and the plan, as Bob mentioned, was submitted. And I guess it took about a year and a half to hear back from DEP. They got quite a lot on their plate. They did approve the plan, really, without any comments. Just a little bit about how the plan was developed. As Bob mentioned, it started back in February 2010, and it culminated with a report in December of 2011. Did a lot of field work. You can see a photo here of basically blowing smoke in the pipes and seeing where there was a cracked pipe underground, as you can clearly see going across that yard. We did flow metering to understand where the worst areas were, where there was more flow coming from, smoke testing. And all of the collector sewers leading to the pump station were inspected with a TV camera, as well as the manholes. So, it was a fair amount, basically a very, very comprehensive look at the collection system. We also did a little bit of hydraulic modeling of the Shore Road Interceptor, which is downstream of the pump station. One of the key decisions, once we collected all this data, is trying to figure out how much to mitigate. The peak flow from that Combined Sewer Overflow in the six years of data that we looked at was almost 2,000 gallons per minute. That's a huge amount of flow. And in one storm, you had over 3 million gallons go overboard of sanitary wastewater. And that just gives you an idea of how much it is, a football field covered in nine feet of water. Now, that doesn't happen all the time, and it doesn't happen all of the storms. So, it was going to be fairly expensive to try to mitigate almost 2,000 gallons a minute of flow. It would have required a lot more work. So, we looked at a lot of different information that was out there, guidance documents, the data we had collected. And jointly, working with the three stakeholders, we determined that we would try to mitigate or eliminate up to 1,100 gallons a minute of flow, to try to -- and by doing that, we would look at getting rid of almost 94 percent reduction in the volumes that overflow from that over time. So, that was set as a guideline for this five-year plan. We looked at various options and how to target and remove 1,100 gallons a minute, looking at trying to go out into the system and replace some of those cracked pipes and get rid of sump pumps and foundation drains, just put in bigger pipes and a bigger pump station. But if you made the pump station that big, it would overwhelm the pump station downstream. So, that didn't work out as well as we had hoped. It's just too much flow. We looked at storage tanks, and we looked at even having a little treatment plan at that location to treat the wastewater before it goes overboard. We looked at financial and technical aspects. How much would it cost for these alternatives? Are they technically feasible? Will they be socially and politically accepted? And in the end, we ended up looking at a fairly intense program of infiltration and inflow removal, basically going and replacing not only the main line pipes and the right-of-way, but looking at people's basements, looking at sewer laterals to get the flow, as you saw in that photo, the flow, the pipe that gets the flow from the basement to the interceptor in the road or the collector sewer. And that was jointly agreed upon by all of the parties working on it. And it was agreed to mitigate to that level in a five-year plan. And here's a graphic of the five-year plan. Essentially, looking to start next year, Maine DEP has stated that I think in 2014, the permit that you have for that CSO master plan comes due. They're usually five-year plans, so you got it in 2009. It gets renewed in 2014, and they've basically stated that by the time it gets renewed again in 2019, we want you to have accomplished all of these projects. So, essentially, starting out this year, we're looking at additional, next year, additional investigation, getting into some of the basements and looking and trying to nail down exactly what the project is going to consist of, in designing that project. Moving on to some additional II investigation and constructing a Phase 1 project in 2015. 2016 and 2017 are some additional II removal projects, design and construction, and doing a preliminary design of a pump station upgrade, which ultimately will become part of the next five years or down the road. The pump station itself needs upgrading anyways, but wanted to try to mitigate some II and get a better sense of how good of a job we really do. And then updating of the plan. As far as the cost of the plan, these were in $211, and then future dollars, where I think five years down the road, that gives you the range of costs to do this five-year plan. I should note that that's a shared cost. That's obviously a shared cost, at least between the town and the city of South Portland. As far as how that's going to affect your sewer fund, that's yet to be determined. And I think that's something that you guys will talk about, I believe, in a meeting in November, to determine if any additional rate increases are needed to be able to implement this plan. Certainly, going to a higher level than 1,100 gallons a minute would have been at least 50 percent, if not 100 percent, more costly. So, we tried to balance the environment and protection of the environment, meeting DEP's guidelines with the impact on the two communities. As far as next steps, as I mentioned, DEP's approved the plan. The 30-day public comment period, I believe, has ended, culminating in this public hearing. Is that correct, Bob? Address any public comments that there are here this evening. We have a similar presentation scheduled in South Portland for October 28th to do a public hearing, and as well as get any comments. And they may approve it that evening as well, the city. I mentioned the November meeting you might have here in Cape Elizabeth. And then ultimately, we will just, if there's no major comments or any comments, we'll just change the cover out, stamp it, and submit it to Maine DEP as a record document. And then, next year, start the five-year plan. So, that's kind of a very quick overview of a tremendous amount of work that was put into this project. And I'll answer any questions.
So, why don't we declare the public hearing open? And then, we'll come back to questions. That's okay? Sure. All right. The Ottawa Road Combined Sewer Overflow Permit Public Hearing Open. And Chris, if someone wants to stand up there, you're going to have to move out of the way. If someone wishes to address us on any public comment they may have about this particular project, please come to the podium, tell us your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. So, I'll say it again, the public comment period still open. Anybody interested? Okay, I'm going to declare closed. Thank you. So, there is no decision to be made here by the council, but if you have questions for Chris, if you remember the workshop, it was pretty informative and rather detailed. I think the smoke testing was quite interesting as to how one goes about that. Is there anything anybody wants? Yeah, Frank?
Just a question. How was it decided that the cost would be split evenly to the Cape and South Portland?
If I said evenly, I may have misspoke.
I may have heard.
I think the, I think there needs to be some discussions between Mike, Jim Gailey, and others in the city of South Portland, and Bob, to decide. And I believe there's some provisions within the existing permit, and there's been some discussions about cost sharing. Certainly, in preparing this study, it was decided upfront how the cost would be shared to hire Wright Pierce to do all the work that we did. So, I think that decision is yet to be made. There is a sharing of cost. I'm not suggesting, it's not necessarily 50/50.
And also, I recall that a number of homeowners of Cape and South Portland needed to be contacted about changing the way in which their basement drains, their foundation drains came in, as well as roof drains came into the system. Has that, those contests been made yet? Or is that going to be?
No. And that's, did you want to address that, Bob?
We haven't programmed an implementation strategy for that yet. So, what we need to do is have our sort of kickoff meeting with South Portland, and then we start doing our I and I investigation. That's when we'll be, you know, looking at homes and seeing what we have for information, and then working with the homeowners to try to reduce those connections.
How do you discover whether or not they're actually connected into the sewer?
Some of it's actually house-to-house, making contact with the homeowner to see what they have for connections in their basement. If they have, you know, something obvious would be a sump pump connection that's connected to the sanitary pipes inside the house. Some of it can be done with camera work on the laterals, but that's often difficult to do. But really need to get in the cellars and see what's going on to do it right.
Jamie?
Yes. So, for the work that would need to be done on individual houses, who's going to pay for that?
We haven't determined that yet. So, that's, we can have more of those discussions in November, and that's really yet to be determined.
Were those connections legal when they were made, Bob?
There's a lot of sump pumps that are into the sanitary system. There's a lot of foundation drains that, by nature of the construction, were tied to the sewer laterals. But I believe our sewer ordinance states that it's really just designed for sanitary flows and not non-sanitary discharges. But some of these were just innocently done years ago, because that was the nature of the system.
Great. Any other questions on this side? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Bob, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your presentation, and a lot of work, and a lot to be done going forward. Thank you very much. We want to, lights on again here, so that the team can hear us. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the second item on our agenda, and that's item 126, and that's the 2013 Draft Green Belt Plan. Jamie, as the liaison to that Conservation Commission, do you have any comments before we move to a presentation and then whatever?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just briefly, I want to thank the Conservation Commission for the hard work they put into this plan. There was a lot of public hearings, a lot of public comment, both orally and writing. And sometimes, the Conservation Commission probably got more than they expected from public comment. But they thankfully had thick skins and acted as good public servants. And on the flip side of that, the public had a lot of comments about the process that I think all of us as councilors should pay attention to for any future Green Belt Plan investigations, and that we should take seriously some of the comments that we've received about how to improve the process in the future. that we've received about how to improve the process in the future. Um, I would advise all council members to, uh, look at some of the case law we've received. I mean, we don't need to do this tonight. It's just, um, suggestions for when we further consider the recommendations. Um, and look specifically at, I think it's a 20, 20-some-odd, 26-page plan or 30-page plan.
Hmm.
Um, the, the, really, the only controversy that I really noticed during this whole process had to do with, uh, a couple of specific trails. I think otherwise, the, the plan will be, um, readily accepted, and the, the hard work that the Conservation Commission, uh, did on this would be, uh, heralded and, um, appreciated, uh, but that there's still some work to be done on a couple of specific neighborhoods.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. With the council's indulgence, um, Garvin Donigan, who is the Chair of the Cape Elizabeth Conservation Commission, would like, uh, to make a short presentation to us.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Garvin Donigan, Conservation Chair, and also, um, Marty Blair here, also another commission member with me. Um, again, I would like to thank the council. Uh, the commission is pleased to present the 2013, uh, Green Belt, uh, Plan to the Town Council for consideration this evening. Uh, it has been very challenging, uh, yet certainly rewarding to work on this document. Uh, during the Green Belt Plan update, the commission heard, uh, approximately over 600 speakers at its meetings and reviewed over 200 emails and correspondence, uh, that is including three petitions. The plan, uh, significantly evolved, uh, and changed throughout, uh, the commission's development of the plan, uh, via over 14 meetings, including two public forums that were split in, uh, North and South Territories. Uh, and that also includes two special meetings that we held with, uh, the Cape Forum Alliance and the Riverside Trustees, or excuse me, the Riverside Cemetery Trustees. Um, and really with the plan changing and evolving, uh, just about after, uh, every meeting. Uh, of the 23 trail lengths shown on the map, uh, currently, uh, trail lengths 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 10 are the Conservation Commission's highest priorities for addition to the existing Green Belt Network. Uh, there was healthy debate on whether to even prioritize trails, and I must emphasize as a spokesman for the commission that, uh, it was, uh, the commission's input to say that all trails are important, uh, but it's fair to look at the highest priorities aside from lending themselves to good comprehensive planning as the commission's intent for future Green Belt efforts. Um, for those of you familiar with our work, uh, these priorities shouldn't be of too much of a surprise, as this is where some of our past, as well as our current efforts, have been occurring, including, uh, some op-eds we've done in the local papers, uh, highlighting and spotlighting, uh, resource allocation. Uh, the prioritized trails also represent a vision of creating a larger contiguous Green Belt loop that utilizes the Shore Road path, uh, Fort Williams, Dire Woods, Lovett Woods, Stone Gate, Robinson Woods, and the Town Center. For the Conservation Commission, and I'd be happy to point out those areas for context, um, obviously Fort Williams being up here, uh, Dire Woods being in this area, Lovett Woods being further south, um, Stone Gate in and around this area, uh, connecting down to the Town Center, and, uh, priority number 10 is small but significant as it would serve to get legal public access to part of Robinson Woods and help accomplish some of the great work that, uh, Celt as well as resources from the town. Uh, for the commission, uh, for the Conservation Commission, uh, the most significant part of the Green Belt Plan is actually not the map. It is in fact the goals for expanding the Green Belt Trails and open space over the next decade. These goals articulate what have been the informal guidelines that the commission has used to grow, grow its trail network, and the conservation has looked to pass to this date, has looked to pass Green Belt Plans, essentially for guidance in accretion of our 2013 Green Belt Plan. Uh, as an all-volunteer, seven-member advisory board, the commission, as usual, does welcome and seeks input from the council. It is the Conservation Commission's intent to work with willing private, uh, property owners and to respect private property rights. Uh, the included case studies demonstrate how in 2001, uh, the Green Belt Plan has been implemented while respecting those rights of private property owners. And, uh, I guess I would say that since the last Green Belt Plan was adopted in 2001, over 11, 11 miles of trails have been added to the Green Belt Plan. And, uh, also another, uh, kind of plug for my Conservation Commissioners, they did want me to reflect, and I agree with them, that we're very much looking forward to getting back to our, uh, kind of standard stewardship practices of the Green Belt, and certainly appreciate, uh, Town Council guidance through the op, through the adoption of the Green Belt Plan.
Great. I see that you didn't take papers out to run for elective office.
Oh, absolutely not.
(laughing)
Since then, when I was, uh, nominated and elected, uh, Chair, I was wondering why there was no, I didn't see any signs coming, uh, up to the, uh, town.
Great. Good.
I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
If, uh, if we can ask questions now, or however, um, what would the council prefer to ask questions now of Garvin, or do we want to go to public comment, and how do you want to?
Just a quick, if you could-
Go ahead.
Repeat the priority list.
Uh, the trail priorities, of course. Uh, trail, and again, uh, I, I do want to be clear. Um, I was personally, as well as other commission members, um, a pretty big advocate of prioritizing. Uh, this is consistent with the last Green Belt Plans where there were priorities outlined, and I think it's fair to prioritize. Again, lends itself to good comprehensive planning, but also shows the commission's intent on where we'd like to do our future work. Uh, those priorities being, uh, and again, these are in conceptual locations. Trail link numbers 1, 2, trail link 3, trail link 5, trail link 6, and trail link 10. That's a total of six priorities. Uh, the last Green Belt Plan had, I believe, five priorities.
Okay. So those are described on page 18, 19, in your packet, so. Any other questions then for Garvin before we? So I would look to the council. We, we obviously need to make some recommendation here, but if, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to open it up to public comment on this. It, um, and we would use our standard rules, which is 15 minutes' worth of, of public comment. If people wish to address us, it would be three minutes, and we'll just see how that, that works. Is that, Frank, go ahead.
Jim, maybe, might we just, before public comment, simply, uh, discuss the possible, the plans for future opportunities for public comment and input to the process so people are aware of where this, this may go.
Yeah. Um, the, the council tonight will, um, consider receiving this report and scheduling a public hearing, and that public hearing could be scheduled in November, it could be December, it could be January. We would not be going to a workshop on this because of the amount of work that's been done already. Workshops tend to be really done for different reasons. This would be something we would take to public comment in a public hearing, which would be devoted to just hearing from you before we would make whatever decision we want to make. So right now, what's on the table with this, with the council is the consideration of receiving this report. Again, we don't have a motion to that effect, nor a second, but that is the thinking at the moment unless I see anything different here. David?
Yeah, I, I agree that, just, I think Frank's point is a good one, that this is not the only opportunity that people are going to have to comment on the Green Belt Trail.
Right.
Uh, we will definitely have a public hearing, as Jim pointed out, November, December, who knows. I, I'm not entirely certain that we don't need a workshop or a sidewalk, but I think that's a conversation we can have after we have the public comments today.
Yeah.
After the 15 minutes.
Absolutely. Great. So, uh, in terms of, uh, do we want to, do we want to take a motion and second it and then open it up to public comment, or how do we wish to do that?
A motion on, uh, acknowledgement?
Yeah. Receipt of the report.
I move that we, uh, acknowledge receipt of the Conservation Commission's draft 2013 Green Belt Plan.
Do I have a second? Frank, second? Okay. So all, let's see what, I think what we should do is, at this point, rather than vote, open it up to public comment and hear what people have to say. And, uh, Garvin, appreciate your, your presentation. Again, stick around.
I will. Thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you and the Conservation Commission for all of your hard work. We'll open this up to public comment. If you wish to address us, please approach the podium.
You want a timer?
Give us your name and your address, and, uh, we do have a timekeeper because, uh, we have been accused in the past of allowing some people to have more to say than others, and I want to keep it as fair as possible.
Hi there. I'm Penny Jordan, uh, one of the owners of Jordan's Farm on Wells Road in Cape Elizabeth. Um, I'm pleased to hear that the approach this evening is that you're receiving the plan and will then, um, hold a public hearing at a future date, because you have an opportunity to, uh, maybe, um, address the process that has been taken up to this point. The process has been extremely challenging for people, people who are property owners and who have attended seven meetings in order to finally have a trail removed from a proposed plan. I think in the future that what needs to happen is that when a property owner speaks about their property relative to a strategic, strategic plan, a proposed plan, or any plan, and they ask that their land not be represented in that plan, it should be taken off at the first meeting and not the seventh meeting. There's still some trails that are, uh, represented in this plan that are, um, challenging from a principle-based perspective. Um, and I, I say that because if we look at, um, the plan and we look at trails that traverse farm property, farmland, uh, private property without the consent of the, uh, owners saying that, yes, I want this on the strategic plan, yes, I am in support of this strategic plan. If there is a farm that is represented on here that has a farm road that is now being looked at as a potential trail, that should be removed from this plan. Working farms should not be represented on the Green Belt Trail if the farm owners have not agreed that that should happen. Um, again, there's, um, also the question of, that could be represented within a strategic plan. Uh, what's the policy when, um, trails abut one's property and people go off the trail onto the private property? Even though they are posted, and these are posted today, and there are people walking off the trails today, who is accountable for, number one, making sure that if somebody happens to be hurt on the private property because they went off the trail, who's accountable for that? What is it that's going to be represented in these Green Belt Plans and these trails that protect the private property owners when people move off the trails? I think that, um, when we talk about over 600 speakers, um, I probably spoke at seven of those meetings, um, and, um, and I really think that-
Wrap it up, Penny, please. If you could wrap it up, please.
I will wrap it up.
Okay.
I won't take the whole 15 minutes, don't worry.
Well, you only get-
I think the bottom line is, you, as you look at this plan, you really need to assess it from a property owner perspective, and make sure that any private property that is represented in a trail, those people need to be contacted directly before any plan is approved.
Great. Thank you, Penny. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to address us? You didn't come here tonight just to sit in the audience and see our new, new digs. Anybody want to, go ahead, sir. Please join us.
(inaudible)
(laughing)
Thank you.
Maybe I should have said my name first. Um, my name is Stuart Wooden. I live on 33 Pilot Point Road. Excuse me. I am one of the butters of Surfside Avenue, Trail Number 23, and I'd like to go over just several of what I think are the most important reasons why a trail should not be developed there. Uh, the first one is, at a recent, uh, Conservation Committee meeting, one of the reasons for adopting Trail 23, Surfside Avenue, was that it would connect with Trails 19, which is the Broad Cove to Shore Acres Connecticut, uh, connector, and Number 22, Turkey Hill Farm to Surfside Ocean Connector. It was implied by the town planner that the owners of the private land had been contacted. In fact, the two primary landowners were unaware of the matter and are totally opposed to a public path on their private property. Without these trails, there'll be no connectivity. The second one, one of the stated goals for Trail Number 23 is that the neighborhood is underserved. In fact, Shore Acres residents have public ads, access to a beach at Trinity Point, and the constructed portion of Surfside Avenue is open to all neighbors for walking and recreating along the water's edge. The next one is that there's a strong legal position that the ownership of the land on the unconstructed portion of Surfside Avenue has passed over to the adjacent landowners, and, um, and any easement rights of the town have lapsed. Lawyers for both the town and the adjacent landowners agree that litigating this issue would be both time-consuming and very expensive. DEP approval for Surfside Avenue, or Surfside Trail would be very difficult, if not impossible to, to obtain. Should a trail be approved, costs for building and maintaining it would be significant. Next one, recent efforts to gain signatures on a petition in favor of the trail have included misleading information regarding ownership of the land, legal issues, and anticipated costs. The environmental impact of the trail was not mentioned to petition signers either. In summary, why spend taxpayers' dollars to develop a 1,300-foot, uh, trail in the backyard of six homes when no trail has ever existed there? Neighbors have already have waterfront access in their neighborhood, and 85% of the town residents feel we have sufficient trails already. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address us? Doesn't look that way. Okay. Anybody?
(inaudible) Sorry, I had to get my thoughts together. It was a very long day at work. My name's Connie Pacillo. I live at 3 Reef Road in Shore Acres, a few streets over from Surfside, and, um, I'm speaking in favor of adding Surfside Avenue to the town's Green Belt. I've lived on Reef Road in Shore Acres for 21 years. At the time I bought my property, I was very concerned because it abutted a paper street. This street, also known right now, currently as Elizabeth Way, is, was created in the early 1900s, just as Surfside was. A few months ago, the town began the process to create access for another property owner in the second half of Elizabeth Way. That process is currently in play. When I became aware of the paper street beside my property was to become something else. I didn't call an attorney, and I didn't threaten litigation. I abided by the process. Why? Because the street was noted in my deed when I purchased my property 21 years ago, and I accepted that as the right thing to do. Back to Surfside and why I support its acceptance into the Green Belt. The shoreline paper street was always intended, since its inception in the early 1900s, to be shared by all, not just for a select few. Two, this is the last remaining shoreline path. Too often, our shoreline is being purchased and privatized to the detriment of all. Three, it is not a road to nowhere. It is a complete loop, and anyone can enter and exit on a public street. And as you all know, in planning a Green Belt, you put things on your wish list, and people ebb and flow. They're either passing away or properties exchange hands. Safety is not an issue. Most neighborhoods have what we call sidewalks that anyone can walk on, and this is no different. I walk my dogs in my neighborhood, and sometimes I step on someone's grass. That happens. It's a fact of life. It shouldn't be any different here. Parking. We have a public beach that was very generously donated to the Cape Elizabeth Land Trust by Paul Colom. He has a gorgeous house, and across the street from him is a beach. It's a beach, not a walking path, so, just so you're not confused. And he gave it to the Cape Elizabeth Land Trust. There isn't an issue with parking. That beach is probably seven houses down from me. That beach is probably seven houses down from me. At the most, on a very hot day, when it's humid and really, really hot, you see about four cars, three of which are neighborhood cars. One perhaps being someone else who actually found the Cape Elizabeth Land Trust property and said, "Oh, it is a public beach." So, safety of children, I've heard also mentioned about Surfside. There are many children who live on Reef Road, and the majority, exclusive of those three or four cars on the very hot day, are neighborhood folks who drive in and out. We took the question of Surfside and whether or not we should try to protect it for now and forever to the public, and we have almost 400 signatures, both on an online and an offline petition. And the petition is very simply, we are asking people, would they like to protect this, and would they like access to it on the Green Belt? And you can see from the petition what we've asked. So, it's not misleading, and unfortunately, you know, everyone has their opinion, but it is very clear. The facts speak for themselves. It's not misleading. Finally, in closing, I ask that you do not allow the threat of any litigation by anyone to threaten your voting process where Surfside is concerned. I live near a paper street. Just because I don't have money to litigate means that my street should be developed and someone else's shouldn't. I think that everyone should look long and hard where Surfside is concerned, for to let this litigation threat hang over you would have far-reaching impact for the process. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else would like to address us? We only have a few more minutes here. Anybody?
My name's Richard Bryant. Excuse me. I live at 55 Spurwink Avenue in Cape. I just wanted to make two quick points. One is that we've lived in Cape, my wife and I, for 20 years now, and among the most attractive things about the Cape has been the rural aspect of the, of many of the neighborhoods and the public access to places like Fort Williams and now the Shore Road Trail, Goldcrest. All those have been developed within the past few decades that we've been here, and have been a significant attraction for us staying in Cape Elizabeth. So, I just wanted to generally support the openness of the process that the Conservation Commission has gone through and that you will be going through and looking at the Green Belt Plan. I think that's critical, that it is open, and you hear all points of view. I think it's also really important that the town continue the long-term perspective it's taken with respect to the Green Belt that's developed so far. It's been done in little pieces. It's not been done by exercising eminent domain, but instead by exercising existing public rights inland and through cooperation of landowners when access was needed over private property. I think that's an important way for the community to go forward, and I think keeping that long-term view in mind, if we look back to where we were 20 years ago, we've made great progress, and it was because of small steps taken along the way. So, I encourage you to keep up that incremental process. But an important aspect of that is make sure that we don't lose some of the public rights that are in existence in the town. In 1997, I believe, the Paper Streets Act gave an opportunity for this town to make an inventory of all paper streets throughout the town and decide whether the town wanted to preserve public rights in those paper streets. And it has done that on two occasions so far, and we're coming up in a few years to the end of the period in which the town has to decide whether it's going to exercise some of those rights. And I'm glad you're dealing with this now. I do think you ought to exercise public rights where it's important in looking at the long-term growth of a Green Belt, and I look forward to speaking with you when you have your public forum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Marshall Goldman. I live at 27 Pilot Point Road, and the Trail 23, at least the undeveloped portion of Surfside Avenue, basically runs right through my backyard. And I appreciate that today you're just accepting the report, so I think that-
You're receiving it.
Receiving it.
Receiving it.
I got that. I'm sorry. I want to, I also want to commend the Conservation Commission. I was at a few of the meetings. It certainly was more than I would have signed up for. The Surfside Avenue Trail is by far the most controversial trail, and I think that really, really what the problem is, and I think that, is that we have a neighborhood dispute. And because of a neighborhood dispute, the issue of the paper street, the Conservation Commission drawing a line on a map, created an avenue to involve the city further in something that I think most of our neighbors would agree we would have liked to work out together, as opposed to bringing it to this point. And I think that's something to bear in mind. That's why it's very controversial. The other problem in the process is that, at the last meeting, what was very frustrating from my point of view, if I had been in your shoes, I'm looking at Jamie right now because I know, in the Conservation Commission's shoes, is there didn't appear to be a set of facts that were developed independently from your point of view. I mean, I personally, I can tell you that if, if there's a public path that goes down in my backyard, that's going to be devastating to us, and it will be devastating to each one of those homeowners there. I can tell you that, that's my opinion. I feel very strongly about it. But what the problem is, is there a number of facts around, what was the reason for the paper street to begin with? Was it ever intended to be a public path or just a street? Does the city still retain legal rights? Has anybody even ever walked on it before this? The only facts that I can tell you, and I'm not going to, unfortunately, I won't be around in the next couple of months, is I've never seen anybody, I personally have never seen anybody walk in front of my house until this controversy arose. And the one person that I saw walking in front of my house was taking pictures of my house for a lawsuit. And that's very intrusive. I can tell you that my opinion is that if you were to ask the entire neighborhood whether they preferred a public path, they would probably tell you no. Do they want the right to walk along the ocean between my house and, and the ocean? Yes. There's a lot of people that do. There's some people that don't. That's a dispute. But do they want it to be open to the entire public? I think if you ask the neighborhood and you talk to them, you would find that, find that they probably would not prefer that, if there was a different way.
Mr. Goldman, thank you.
I understand. So-
Or you can just wrap it up. We want to get to the next decision here, and we're going to have ample time to have these conversations again.
So, anyway, I would hope that you would develop, that the city would develop independently of one party's point of view or the other, the set of facts for which you'd make the appropriate decision.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so the 15 minutes, actually plus, is up, and we have a motion on the table to receive the Green Belt Plan. It's been seconded. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Jessica.
I'd just like to, I attended some of the meetings when I, when I was able to, and I would like to commend the Conservation Commission for their grace under fire, because they were emotional meetings, understandably so. And, you know, these are volunteers that have worked very hard. We have citizens that are very concerned, and, again, understandably so. So, I think that, that our volunteers have worked very hard and deserve our praise for producing a document under stressful conditions and, and doing their job as charged by the council.
David?
I don't have any further discussion about the motion that's pending, but will we then have a discussion about next steps after we vote on that motion?
Well, I mean, we can, we can, we can have that. I mean, I've had those conversations with Michael about what, whether we should be doing a workshop, whether we should do a walk, whether we should do a public hearing. He's not here tonight, which is unfortunate, because, you know, that's the planning process, but I'm all ears. If you, if you want to make suggestions about that, I mean, I'm more than happy to take that discussion and formulate strategy. If, what are you, what you're, what are you thinking?
Well, open to ideas, it seems to me, and as I've mentioned to a lot of folks on both sides of this issue, I would like the council together to go see, especially Surfside Avenue, that proposed trail.
Yep.
I think if we all see the same thing at the same time, that's helpful, rather than each of us individually going out there. Caitlin might see one thing and think that's a hazard, but then we might learn another, I might learn something separately, and then we're here together trying to figure out what's up with that trail. So, I think a sidewalk, at least to that trail, and maybe others, I don't know, would be appropriate. I am interested to hear from the Conservation Commission as to its rationale on some of these recommendations, especially the controversial ones, and obviously, we're going to need a public hearing. I don't want to belabor the process. I think this has been going on for a long time now, and I do think it's important in closure, so that people aren't experiencing a lot of angst over the issue by having to drag on for three more months. But a lot's gone into this, and I would be a bit fearful that we may not understand completely the commission's rationale without some sort of meeting with them, i.e. a workshop. But I don't want to make this go on forever either.
No, that's mine. I mean, you, you served, what, six years on the planning board, and I was six years on zoning, and there was a lot of benefit to having a sidewalk, and because you get everybody on the same page. I know that some of us have actually walked this trail with members of the neighborhood, independent of one another. So, you know, there's a lot of advantage to getting the same perspective, if you will. I like the caveat of asking the Conservation Commission, you know, what was the rationale behind some of this as well, because I think that could be helpful, other than reading minutes or having it, you know, expressed to us by staff. So, so I think that's, if anyone has any additional thoughts about what David's presented, I mean, I, that's where I'm headed, because I really believe the reason we're receiving this and not accepting it is because we want to move through the process ourselves and understand what we have in front of us for a vote. So, Caitlin, I think you were, yeah?
I support Dave's idea. I think both of them are great, the workshop jointly with the Conservation Commission and the sidewalk. And I just had a procedural question.
Go ahead.
If anybody knows the answer, if we don't receive the report, what happens to it?
Well, it still exists, so it, it, I mean, technically, it exists. I don't think it's going to go away. So, I think it's really in terms of, we're trying to be deliberate in our process of evaluating what's been recommended by a citizen-volunteer board that we've appointed. So, to some degree, we, we, I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to deal with it, but I think in a very thoughtful way, which is what David has presented. So, if we were to defeat this tonight, I think it still exists out there, Caitlin.
Well, that's, I mean, that was, my question is, you know, the necessity of a vote. I mean, we, we've got it, it exists, that's my point. I was just wondering what voting to receive a report actually does, I guess was.
Well, you can take a crack at it, Jessica.
Well, I think that voting to receive the port, report and acknowledging receipt of it allows us to proceed forward with our, our study.
Yeah. Frank?
Just a suggestion or a question, really. I'm wondering if it'd be possible to address some of the legal issues and try to get legal determinations on some of the questions before we go a whole lot further, whether it's the, you know, the, 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 the continuing existence of the paper street, or some of the legal questions, or even the DEP's point of view on this, so that if some of these issues turn out to either strongly favor or go against this particular controversial street, the council will know that in advance and play a role in the workshop.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, another good, a good note, you know, I did talk to Michael about that possibility, because clearly there are some questions, and we need some solid basis for whatever it is we're going to consider. So, Jamie, you had a question?
On Frank's point, I mean, I too agree that we should dig into the, some of the preliminary legal questions first. Unfortunately, from what I've read so far, I don't think it's going to be dispositive. I think it's just going to have a continuing question mark on the legality regarding paper streets, but it bears further research. And as far as Caitlin's point, I think that in general with the, when commissions come to us with a finished work product, we should always receive them, and then we can always decide whether or not to take any action on them, but I think we should always receive them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Kathy?
I just, I agree with what Frank said. I think we have to, to the extent that we can, we need to have some of our questions answered, so that as we move forward, whether it's, you know, the legality of the paper street and who owns it and so forth, because I don't think we can move forward if we don't have some of these pieces. Now, whether it becomes, you know, whether it's unknown or whatever, I, I think we have to pursue that a little bit more, because I think if we don't push through this issue somehow, it's going to come up again. It's going to be, come up again in a year from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, and we're just not doing anybody any service by not trying to find a way to work through what the issue is and move forward. Because clearly we have, as Mr. Goldman said, we have two, two groups of people that are opposed to each other. And so, it's not unlike the other issue that we were dealing with, and so I'd like to, I would be interested in some more legal counsel on this.
Good. So, Deb, you've got some copious notes here.
I do.
Okay, great. David, you had another point?
Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me if we do go to a workshop, one of the agenda items would be to invite the town attorney-
Right.
-to give us a primer on, on the issue. And, you know, for lawyers on the opposite side of a case to say that they agree that litigation will be expensive is frankly meaningless to me. I mean, of course they agree on that. So, I don't think that the threat of litigation should deter the council from moving forward on this. It's just we need to better understand the legal issues before we move forward. So, I don't want anybody to think that we're shaking in our boots, fearful of moving forward just because there might be a lawsuit. That's part of the process sometimes, unfortunately. So, we just need to become educated to make a better decision.
Good. Any further conversation? Looks like we, okay, we can take a vote. All those in favor of receiving the Green Belt report? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. So, usually, after we take an issue that everybody's interested in, they all vacate the building. Yes. There are storm warnings out there, folks. I'm just going to give you a heads up. Not like what was in here. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We move on to item 127, which is the election warrant. Deb?
Thank you very much. This is the election warrant for the municipal election.
You want to wait on? No, you can just wait a second or two. There you go. They were a little quieter when they were sitting. Okay. Deb, go ahead.
Thank you very much. This is the election warrant for the municipal election. We are calling for two members of the council and two members of the school board for three-year terms until December 12th, 2016. The election will be held actually in conjunction with the state referendum election on Tuesday, November 5th. Polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I would recommend that the council vote to approve the warrant as presented.
Do I have a motion? Frank?
So moved.
That was easy.
That's adequate, right? Is that adequate?
You only have, you only have one more meeting. You can state the entire motion for the, come on. Anyway, we have a second.
I'll second.
Jessica seconded. Okay. Do we have any discussion? I guess if you- I guess if you could tell us a little bit about absentee voting?
We are getting the absentee ballots together. They will be available this week, and beginning this week. The deadline to vote absentee is Thursday, October 31st. So if anyone chooses to vote absentee, or if they'll be away on Election Day, there is a deadline, the Thursday prior to the election, October 31st. And also in the next few days, we'll be working to get all of the state ballot questions on our website, as well as the municipal ballot, so anyone can access our website for information for the November 5th election. So we're working on that in the next few days.
Great. Any questions for Deb? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Item 128, the general assistance ordinance. Do I have a motion? If you remember, last year, we moved this in its entirety, just, we followed the main municipal ordinance that is suggested. However, if the council so wishes to send it to our own ordinance committee, and I see at least one member of that ordinance committee saying, "I don't think so." And I see the chair saying, "No." Okay, so do I have a motion on the general assistance ordinance?
David? I move that the council set a public hearing on the model general assistance ordinance for Wednesday, November 6th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Notice the ordinance committee is acting very judiciously here to get this moved. Any discussion about this? Any... Jamie, yes?
Just since I haven't been around that long, council, I'm assuming in the past you've been happy with the proposed model ordinance?
Yes, it's what we have utilized in the past, and has no, there hasn't been any issues, but Jamie, Jessica?
Well, they study cost of living, they look at economic stresses, and make their determinations. And to my recollection, we've always been fine with that, so...
Yeah, it hasn't been any issues.
Did they change much year to year?
There was a little change, I think, two years ago, but we, that I recall, felt that Cape Elizabeth citizens needing this assistance would be well-served. We still voted it in, so...
So Jamie, I hope that you answered that. Any further? Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous. And number 129, the capital improvement plan. What you have in front of you is to acknowledge the receipt. We're using that quite a bit tonight. Receipt of the combined capital improvement plan to thank the finance chairs, Frank Gavinelli and Michael Moore, for all their work on the plan. If we chose not to receive it, I'm not sure what would happen, but...
It would just disappear.
Anyway, do I have a motion on this item? David?
So moved.
Group's getting...
Touche.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you for saying the word. I appreciate that much. That's great. Is there any discussion? I mean, I would like to say to the work that Frank and Michael did, and really to everybody who participated, because Pauline was involved, and Michael was involved, I mean, the superintendent was involved. I mean, there was a tremendous amount of energy, and I think it's great to see something that's in a plan, a strategy that we can pull out and review as we go forward with whatever the conditions are.
There was extreme cooperation in the steps. I mean, anytime we asked Pauline for information, she forwarded immediately. Mike communicated with Meredith. I mean, it was really a terrific example of, you know, joint effort and a sort of single government concept.
Yeah. We've been asked to participate in November and give examples of our one-town concept to area governments. And Meredith and John Christie are going to be there, and I'm going to be there as well, representing the town council. And this is just another example of the kinds of work that we're capable of, and hopefully will give us a roadmap going forward. But again, my hat's off to the good work. I mean, it's, you know, it's work in progress. You know, we're receiving it. We're not really accepting it, but hats off to you, Frank.
Great.
Stick around as a consultant when we're done, right?
Yeah.
Any further comment to make about this? Okay. All those in favor? And it's unanimous. And the last item on our agenda is, again, a second opportunity for citizens to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, and seeing no one in the room, I think we can suspend that. One announcement, we don't have an agenda for the October workshop, which is on the 16th. And at this point, we would be canceling that. However, given the direction that I received from the council on the Green Belt, we may capture the 16th as a work meeting. So at this point, we were going to cancel it, but my sense is that we'll have to be in touch with you once I talk to Michael and determine. That might be an opportunity for us to get the Conservation Commission together with us and have a joint discussion about where their heads are in terms of what they come up with. But at this point, we were going to cancel it. And then Deb would like to announce a couple more meetings. We've got, let's see...
Just a reminder that the November council meeting is actually on that first Monday, similar to this meeting tonight, November 6th. It's going to be a town council caucus and the regular council meeting, and then on Wednesday...
That is a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday. Excuse me. Yes, thank you. Yep, that's a Wednesday.
The 6th, there's a Wednesday, right?
The 6th, yep. And then Wednesday, November 13th, is a town council workshop.
Yeah.
Those dates have been announced, but again, just reminders. And then December, I think we go back into a regular...
We do. We do. So we'll be in touch on the 16th. Given the direction that you've given me today, I think we're probably going to want to use that time, so we'll see what happens. The chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
You can't even say it. Seconded by David. Any discussion? Did you have discussion, Jessica?
No, I was just kind of voting.
I bet she was going to discuss the adjournment. I don't know.
She's ready to vote. It's too early.
It's too early. Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. I think we got somebody.